I see some people mouthing this. So let's get started. This is the April 27th, 2021 Planning Subcommittee Meeting. I'm Krista Nielsen. And tonight, we're going to continue our conversation of inclusionary zoning, which we started last month and started even before that with some conversations about affordable housing. And Lynn, I believe emailed out to everybody yesterday some draft revisions to Section 7.6. So that's where we're gonna spend our time tonight. I don't have a presentation or anything. I do have five areas that I want to talk about, but I also hopefully want to leave plenty of time if any of you have specific issues or comments or questions that we can address those as well. And so just to give you a little background, at the end of the last meeting, we talked about two potential paths forward for moving with inclusionary zoning. One of them was to do an overlay zone. And the other one was to make some revisions to an existing section of our zoning regulations, which is Section 7.6. And the feedback I got from those who provided feedback was that they thought 7.6 might be the more expeditious way to go. So that is where I have focused my efforts in the last month. I know that this was emailed out yesterday, so I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to read it in detail. So I'll just quickly walk through kind of what's in here, what I've changed and what's new, just so you have a lay of the land. And then like I said, we'll go ahead and I've got sort of five issue areas I want to focus on. But certainly, like I said, I'm open to other comments and questions as we go through it. So Section 7.6, as it currently exists, starts off with subsection A, which is called the inclusionary zoning fee. And this is essentially what we, I think collectively, call the Housing Trust Fund when we're talking about it, just in terms of operational terms. So I'm recommending that we change the title of that session, especially since I think if we're adding a whole new section on inclusionary zoning, I don't want these two things to be confused because they are different things. And then the only other main change I made to that first letter A was to add that the Housing Trust Fund money can only be dispersed by the town of New Canaan, the New Canaan Housing Authority, or other nonprofit entities as authorized by the town for construction, rehabilitation, or repair of affordable housing. And the thought there is that if we're going to start requiring private developers to provide affordable units in their projects, then obviously, there's probably going to be some pressure from those developers to want to tap into the Housing Trust Fund that we've already created and have money sitting in. Long term, and Lynn chime in wherever you want, I'm not sure that that's a bad idea. It might be really great for us to provide that type of subsidy to developers who, as part of their projects, are providing affordable units. But one of the things I heard in our conversations with Darian and Greenwich was that figuring out who gets the money, how much money, when they get the money, why they get the money, all of those priorities is actually one of the most complicated things that they've dealt with. And so I think that requires more thought than maybe time is going to allow us to give it right now. And I'm hoping that maybe when we move forward with our 830J Affordable Housing Plan, we can give that that sort of prioritization of who gets money and when and for what, the thought that it requires. But for now, just to keep that money in the Housing Trust Fund or being used by the New Canaan Housing Authority, my thought was to put this in to just like kind of hold it until we are ready to do something more with it. Under the next section, which was formerly called Section B, was called Affordable Housing Developments. I don't know the history of ones. Actually, the whole Section 7.6 was added into the regulations. But to me, the section is about what's called the Housing Affordability Plan. And I believe it's a requirement of 830G that any projects that are providing affordable units have this Affordable Housing Plan, Housing Affordability Plan, which lays out kind of all the ways that these units are going to be managed. You know, whether they're going to be built at the same time as the market rate units, whether they're going to be commensurate in size, how you're going to figure out what the rent prices or the sale prices are, who's going to do the intake for people who are applying for these units. And so the most, the part that I added the most to there is on page two, under Section 3. We'd had about, I think, four or five things as being required by a Housing Affordability Plan. I added a bunch more based on my review of other towns' regulations and what they required, stuff that I thought seemed good and useful. And long term, the recommendation, the 2011 study that was done, was that we create some sort of model Housing Affordability Plan that, you know, Joe Developer can kind of just make the changes to this section and that section when they come in. But it's sort of like, we've got a boilerplate template that pretty much everyone uses, unless they have some reason not to. So I think, you know, long term, we may not need all of these things under Section 3 if we create a model, but for now, I was trying to include everything. And you'll see there's a blank spot and a note on the bottom of page two, and that's one of the issues that I want to come back to.
Can I ask your question, Krista?
Yeah, of course.
So in that section, and I'm just looking at myself here, in, in section, I guess, Section 7.6B, affordability plan requirements. It seems to be in my head, and maybe I'm just not understanding it, when they start talking about parity of units. So I guess on page two, the top of the page, first paragraph, the number and size of location, the number in the red here, the number and location of affordable and market rate dwelling units, the size, you know, shall be equivalent to the market rate units. And then below, the construction quality should be comparable. And then below, it says no affordable unit shall be 75% of the market rate. So I'm just trying to understand, should the affordable units be at parity with the market rate? Or should they not? Because as I understood it from our last conversation, the affordable units are one-bedroom units because they're the cheapest to build based on what Arthur was saying, whereas like other units in the building could be two or three-bedroom. And like, I was just trying to understand.
Right. So the way that this is laid out is, I think, I mean, based on what I've read in other towns and what I basically copied and put here, is that you're trying to keep this ratio the same. So if you're building, say, a really large project and you've got 50 units and a third of them are going to be one-bedroom, a third of them are two-bedroom, and a third of them are three-bedroom, you want your affordable units in that project to mirror that same ratio in terms of how many one, two, and three bedrooms. So the way this is laid out, we would not ideally want a developer to come in and say, okay, yeah, I'm going to do this, but I'm going to make all the affordable units one-bedroom. We'd want them to provide like that same ratio of one, two, and three bedrooms on the smaller scale for the affordable units that they're providing.
Or studios. I mean, I remember Scott Hobbs said that for 830G, it's not just a function of the number of dwelling units, but is it a one-bedroom, or a three-bedroom, or a two-bedroom? All of those factor in. And so
Right, I think we get different.
The design of the unit matters.
Right. And I don't know if this is what you're saying, John, but I think we get different housing equivalency points for different types and sizes of units as well. So, you know, I think there probably is more value towards an 830G moratorium for some of the larger units than just the smaller ones.
There's another drafting wrinkle, which is pretty important. And that goes to the, there are restrictions in the federal tax code with respect to low-income housing tax credits that basically say two things. Number one, you want to be at parity for mix. And number two, you cannot downsize and just throw in small units and have them qualify. They have to be in approximate, particularly for new construction, in an approximation that looks like a quote "normal" market rate unit. You can have different fixtures. You can have different finishes. You don't, you know, you can theoretically have different access to amenities, but you can't have separate entrances, for example. You can't segregate low-income folks to a particular category of housing. And you can't say they only get to live in the studios because that's anti-family.
What does equivalent mean technically?
Equivalent for
We said 75% or more. I'm wondering, how's it defined?
That meets your thing. They're just trying to prevent you from doing, if somebody's going to use tax credits, they can't come in, build a 30-unit building, and say, okay, 20% of my 30 units is X. I'm just going to do it with studios.
You can, however, make the market rate unit the park view and the affordable unit the dumpster view, or the backyard view, or something like this.
They don't have to be the best units. They don't have to have rental equivalents.
Because I remember renting an apartment and it was, you know, if you want to get this unit, it's $150 a month less, but, you know, you get no view. And if you want to save $150, help yourself. But that was the choice available to me.
Yeah. The Chinese restaurant problem.
Chinese, you have to explain that one to me.
They always, they refer this as to the guy who's immediately above the Chinese restaurant with the view of the dumpster is never happy.
No.
Well, I mean, I was happy with $150 less a month, but you know, that was me.
Depends on when the rats come in your apartment. I can speak experience.
But I take your point. What I'm hearing from you, Art, is that on subsection G, the 75% number is an okay number.
Yes.
Okay, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Krista, did we answer your questions?
Well, I mean, you did. No, thanks for getting into this here. I mean, I guess my thinking is that I'd want to at least have hooks into the federal qualifications that Arthur's pointing out and maybe use some of the same language. Because, you know, rather than, I mean, and this is me coming in, you know, not nearly as experienced as you are, but, you know, I think it would be nice if we could kind of model this on, you know, the hooks that are at either state or federal level for these tax credits. Because I wouldn't want to create a scenario where the model that we're creating doesn't qualify for the tax credits that Arthur's describing.
Krista, I assume you lifted this out of either the Greenwich or Westport rules? Or maybe this is
Yeah, I mean, I can't say which one each of these came from, but I looked at Greenwich, Darien, Westport, Stanford, Norwalk.
Yeah, no, one would expect to see that 75% figure in there based on, to get Lytec. We're never going to get 9% Lytec, which is the more valuable in New Canaan in all likelihood, because it won't meet the state prioritization of how to allocate the credits. But for the 4% credits, which are unlimited, that's how you win to get them. That's how we've done the affordable housing so far.
Okay. All right. Have you seen what I'm talking about, these model affordable housing plans in other communities where they kind of just hand it to the developer and say, okay, you know, manipulate this for your project, but most of the language has to stay?
Yeah, I have seen them, but in the end, the guys who do this write their own. So your earlier statement, Krista, was perfect, right? Which is, we may build one of these affordable frameworks, then somebody who wants to apply is going to say, does this work for my model? Because there are a limited number of firms, law firms frankly, that do this work in the state. And they're pretty good at it.
Okay. Okay. Let's keep moving unless there's more stuff there. So the entirety of Section C here is new language that I added to create this inclusionary zoning that we've discussed. And so within this, there's a couple of things that I think we can resolve tonight. There's a couple of things that I think we should talk about, but probably are going to require more work outside of this meeting. So the first, if you've read through this or had a chance, I did, under Section 2, applicability, I've kept it as four or more units in the multifamily apartment or any of the business zones. I did take out within a half-mile the train station, which was, at least, I think I received that suggestion from at least two people. But I did keep that you have to have access to public water and sewer, which will still somewhat limit the geography of where this can be applied. Under Section 3, that is where we get into how many affordable units you have to provide. This, that table you see there was truly me just trying to mash a bunch of comments together. You know, I've seen places and we've had some comments about doing what I'm going to call a scaled approach, which is basically what I've done here. If you have this many units, you know, between this and this, you provide this many affordable units. In the past, or last time, we talked about doing a straight percentage, which is probably simpler. If we just say, you know, 20% or 10% of all units have to be provided as affordable, that's, you know, just cleaner in terms of it takes up less space on the page. What I gathered from talking specifically with Scott Hobbs and David McCarthy is that when you're doing a smaller development, so let's say a four, or five, or six-unit, or even eight-unit development, the cost of providing that additional affordable unit is substantially higher than when you do more units than that, right? Like when you get into a larger-scale project, it's not going to hurt you as badly to providing that affordable unit. Yes, John?
Two points on the column total number of units. The 4 to 10, it should be 11 to 15, not 10 to 15.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah.
16 to 20, et cetera.
Yep.
There's an overlap.
Yeah.
And Section B would then only apply to 31-plus, in effect. Because the other ones are fixed ratio.
Right.
So essentially, you round up.
Right.
So if it's 7.2 units is the math, they have to build eight units. That's the way I read that.
Does that round up? I mean, because round would technically start at .5, wouldn't it, normally, mathematically?
So this says, the language that I have included says, "The fraction shall be rounded to the next higher whole number." I've seen it done both ways. I've seen places where you, you know, do traditional math rounding, and if you're under .5, you go down. And if you're above .5, you go up. So, you know, I'm open to comments. I'm open to comments on this range that I put here as well. My thought was I'm trying to keep the number of affordable units somewhere between 10 and 25% of the overall project. I think if you get above 25, and that's probably too much to ask of a developer. So if you're providing four units total, you have to have one affordable. That's 25%. If you're up to 10 units total, you still provide one affordable unit, and that's 10%. So I tried to keep these between that range. Like I said, I'm open to thoughts on how to improve this, or if
My personal thought is that I think, I think the burden at four units is pretty high to have one unit be affordable. You know, if you think about, you know, a house that's too high, and, I mean, having 25% of it be effectively, you know, a loss for the developer seems like a pretty difficult scenario.
Isn't the ratio the state is using a 10-to-1 ratio in 830G?
Right. So the state, well, requires the town to move towards 10% of the overall housing stock is affordable. So yeah, that's, that's, so when I talked to Darien, they do 12%. I think somewhere I provided that list of what every other town is doing before. But Darien was doing 12%, and I said, well, that's kind of a specific number. Like, how did you decide on 12? And they said, well, we wanted to be north of 10, but we didn't want to be too far north of 10. So, and that may be one of the things, John, Chris, that they're changing in their revisions.
The 20%, 25% only implies you're doing a four unit. If it's a five unit, it's 20%.
Right, it goes down.
Really, everything's going to be 20 or lower, except for a four unit.
Well, and the reason we started at four, as you may recall, is based on what's happening at the state level with 1024, Senate Bill 1024, and, you know, the potential for this requirement that we allow up to four-unit projects pretty much anywhere close to our downtown.
Although, I think, Krista, that
Has that language been taken out?
Yeah, that section, that section was stripped from 1024. So all the language that was around a half-mile radius of a TOD and a quarter-mile radius of a commercial corridor, along with the, you know, minimum density of 15 units in acre lot within that radius, that, my understanding, has been stripped from 1024.
It's just been stripped from 1024, not the filler bills. It's in the filler bills.
Yeah, so, right. I mean, in theory, the legislators could include those sections in any type of, let's say they want to do, stick that amendment in, or those sections, I should say, in a budget bill. They could, in theory. So there is potential through either dummy bills or filler bills to stick that language in there. But the kind of hallmark bill that was, to segregate CT, was advocating for, that language has been stripped from that hallmark bill, for now.
Right. And they are lobbying to get it put back in.
Yes.
Every week.
Yeah. Actually, Krista, I apologize for asking this, but where can I pull up this document that you're referring to?
Lynn emailed it yesterday. Lynn, do you know when you emailed it?
Um, I will.
3:29.
3:29. Okay. Thank you. I'll look for it.
Okay. So, I mean, look, we could start it higher than four units if we feel that the burden of providing one affordable unit on a four-unit development is too high. And, you know, take the risk of whatever happens at the state level. Or, you know, like I said, I'm open to how we amend this.
I'm just thinking about the behavior. So, I mean, because if I'm a developer and I have the option of building four units, or five, or six, I mean, on a piece of property, I think I would say, hey, if I build four, 25% of my potential profit is sunk here. So I'm going to try to squeeze in seven units and get six market rate for one affordable, or nine. So I'm just thinking about behavior because
Right.
where I'm going to try to make sure I have three honking big units.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Either that, or you're going to build three units and say, I'm not even going to mess with this.
Right. So it's just, I mean, can I design a solution and then, you know, unintended consequences? Like, there are no four-unit, no four- or five-unit developments.
Your real problem happens if you don't have this, and people start doing four-unit developments. And then we add to the denominator again without anything curing our problem in the numerator. So as a matter of policy, developers will always try to get as many units into whatever space they can, I think, as possible. I don't know that, you know, because of laws of small numbers, right? You have to start somewhere, right? And each one of these is a separate limited partnership. So you can't even say to the developer, if you're doing something somewhere else, you got to help here. I think you have to start with, if it's four units or more, you got to provide a unit. People will appeal anyway. They'll say I have a hardship, but let them try and demonstrate the hardship. Otherwise, we'll end up with people building a lot of four-unit luxuries, and then we end up significantly increasing the denominator again. The reason Darien came up with the 12% number was they felt that at least if they were 12%, if somebody builds a unit, at least they're doing something against that 10% number because it's higher than the 10%.
Right.
I mean, starting at 20 is aggressive as all get out, but at least it gives us a negotiating position, too. When we get some flack for this, we can always say, okay, yeah, we'll back this off to 15.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. You know, it always can be revised over time. I mean, to a certain extent, this is putting something out there.
And can people, do people do payment and lose? So say, you know, is that a possibility?
Yeah. So, you know, that's my other low-hanging fruit. So let's just skip to that one right now, which is on page five. It actually starts on the bottom of page four, under Section 5, Application Requirements, letter C. So what I've included for language regarding fee and lieu is, and a lot of this, again, is kind of mashed from other places. But in the case of hardship, where providing the mandatory affordable units is not possible, the applicant will submit to the commission a written statement explaining the hardship and requesting approval for payment in lieu of construction of some or all of the affordable unit, required affordable units. The commission will make a determination at its absolute discretion as to whether to accept the statement of hardship and for how many units. If a fee and lieu is accepted by the commission, it will, number one, take the form of a one-time cash contribution equal to 300% of the state median income for a family of four per required affordable unit to the Housing Trust Fund. Number two, the calculation of the number of affordable units required to be paid by fee and lieu is the same as listed on that chart we just discussed, and that the fee and lieu shall be paid prior to the issuance of the first zoning permit. So that gets to this language about, you know, hardship. I think we have to talk with our attorneys about whether we have the absolute discretion, as I've written here, to make a determination on whether to accept their statement or not, or if we're always required to give them an out for fee and lieu. That was copied, I think, from Darien, that, you know, that absolute discretion. The other piece that I wanted us to talk about is what this fee and lieu looks like. So what I included here, I thought was pretty straightforward and simple. It might not be the right number. But it's a multiplier of the state median income for a family of four. And just for your reference, this year, in 2021, the state median income for a family of four is $96,542. So doing that, the advantage, in my opinion, of doing that is that the state is going to be regularly, annually, increasing what this SMI is. So we don't have to mess with the numbers. Like, I think Stanford's requires them to annually go in and update what the fee and lieu calculation is, and that just seems like an administrative headache to me. So I was trying to find a way that we don't have to every year figure out what should the new number be. And so using a multiplier of the state median income seemed easy. Darien does the 300%, which I did the math in the margin there. At 300%, this would be $289,574 per unit. Now, based on what I heard last time from at least Art, if not others, that's not the cost of building one affordable unit. So maybe we want a higher percentage, you know, maybe 300% is low. And I don't know legally, you know, how high we can go before we get pushed back in that realm either. But I think what I heard last time was 450,000 was kind of the starting point for providing affordable unit.
I mean, you can't get, you can't build a unit in Connecticut for less than a half a million bucks right now. On the other hand, if you collect, or if we collected $290,000 in the trust fund, if we were to do another project, that'd give us a lot of leverage against debt, equity, low-income housing tax credits, et cetera, from the trust fund. So that's why I think that 300% number is quite powerful. Because it means somebody can say, okay, I don't want to spend another 300 grand. I'll send a check to the town. I'm done. That Housing Trust Fund continues to be a powerful tool. The change that you also made, Krista, upfront, with giving the discretion so clearly marked is really helpful, because then you won't get a for-profit developer coming in trying to argue that you need to give them a lot of money to build their luxury apartments, and we need to pay for their affordable units.
Right.
Do you know whether or not some of our peers do a area median income as opposed to an SMI, just to kind of make it a little bit more regionalized and reflective of the demographic that's specific to us?
Bigger.
I believe, well, the state, the 830G, you only get credit off of SMI. So everyone pretty much does SMI. Although, New Canaan is close to the New York metro region, so a lot of times you also get the AMI. But, but within the state, within 830G, it's SMI.
I got two issues. One, if 300% of state median income is less than 300,000, and it costs half a million a unit, essentially, this is cheaper than building a unit. It sounds
Right. So are we going to just incentivize people to pay the money and not have to deal with the headache of building?
They pay the cash and they move on. And they don't have to deal with having affordable units in their development.
Right.
The second one is, at the very beginning, there's the 1% fee, tax, what have you. My understanding from the people who know is that generates about $200,000 a year on average. That's not even half a unit. And so I think the town council ultimately has to decide that one. It's not ours, purview. You know, should we, should we, as a commission, recommend to them that this number simply isn't cutting it anymore? And that we need to increase it if we really want to fund this Housing Trust Fund. So I think that's something to be considered as well. Because as has been mentioned in this commission and this subcommittee, you know, nothing gets built without a subsidy from somewhere.
Right.
And subsidy is how many dollars you have. So the more dollars, the more affordable housing, the more units, et cetera.
I don't know who can answer this question, but I guess one of my thoughts, if we stick with the 300% of SMI, which is, as we already discussed, lower than the actual cost of providing an affordable unit, perhaps we are incentivizing developers to just pay the fee and lieu and not actually build the units, which, as Art pointed out, is great because then we're funding the Housing Trust Fund and the Housing Authority has, you know, this big lump of cash that they're sitting on to build new units. But I guess one of the things, my concerns, is that it sounds like the Housing Authority is kind of out of sight for the time being. So are we just saving all this money to build what, where? We don't have an actual plan for how that's going to get used. So is it better just to get units on the ground than to have money in the bank?
I think what you're really focusing on here is, is you're focusing on an alternative for a hardship case, right? You're going to want to begin with the view that if somebody does material development, they're going to come in and do units. Say it settles at 15%. That's a really good thing. If somebody comes in and says, I want to build a four-unit and I got a hardship, you know, I think that you're at least going to have an opportunity to be reasonable with them. you know, I I I think that you're at least going to have an opportunity to be reasonable with them. And if the three hundred percent number is what our competitor towns are doing, we're at least not crazy off the edge.
How is hardship defined juridically? So I'm a developer. I got a hardship. You tell me no, and I say, planning zoning commission, you have acted improperly because I have a genuine hardship and you have unduly, you know, ignored my hardship, and I take you to court. So what's a hardship?
Right. So I think we probably need to ask the town council that question. I mean, that's why I included the language at our absolute discretion, which means we can change what hardship means depending on, you know, the applicant and the situation and whether we feel like it's a hardship. It gives us a lot of leeway, but legally, I don't know if that gets us into trouble.
Do we need to say hardship at all? Can we just simply write ourselves the power to uh, accept cash as opposed to units? Are we legally able to do it? Which gives us far more flexibility. You know, it's simply our, in in effect legislative judgment that that's what's best. That way we avoid that whole hardship litigation thing that I think is going to be looming, because lawyers love fussing over words.
I like that idea.
Just get rid of it. You know, the commission, it's sole discretion.
Right.
Can I ask you a question? I I want to be respectful of our time, though. Um, are we, are we running out of time?
We, um, yes and no, but the last couple of things I wanted to talk about, like I said, are things that I'm not sure we're going to solve tonight. So I was going to kind of present them to you, see if you had any thoughts, and then tell you that my recommendation is that we have got to deal with some of us outside of the subcommittee meeting. So go ahead. We we have enough time for your question.
Well, um, okay, well, just quickly, and going to Art's comments about the the cost per unit. Is it, um, say, we have a pile of money into the housing fund, or we have a developer build the unit? From a, from a cost of unit perspective, does it cost the town more to build the unit? Or does it cost a private developer more? Because I know with municipal developments, you know, prevailing wage and and those elements, what I wouldn't want to have happen is we take this money into this pool, and then it costs us thirty percent more to build the same unit than the private sector. So I I was concerned on, you know, are there, you know, faster movements? And and also, just by nature of the way the town's going to build units, whether it be, um, you know, the the two housing authority units, they're going to be much larger in nature and take further time to get on the ground. So to your point about sites. So from a cost and and logistics perspective, how do we balance that? Maybe Art, maybe that question was for you in terms of.
I I was gonna say, I don't think New Canaan as a town really wants to get into the building process itself. You know, we we currently have administered a number of projects, but they've largely been done by private activity. The math of affordable housing is a screwy thing, Chris. That you you get a guaranteed developer fee, and it's the most counterintuitive thing ever, which is basically a sliding scale of up to twelve percent of the total development cost. So the more it costs, the more you can earn as a developer fee. So uh, there's no incentive particularly to lower costs, particularly if you have subsidized credit-driven transactions. The thing is, we don't want to presume that because we have some money in the housing trust fund, we're able to build housing. We won't be able to. The only thing that will really work here is if somebody comes into town and they are going to build, we really want them to build a, at least a pro-rata share of the units that don't make us worse with respect to thirty G. I presume other people agree with that statement. I mean, our our real thing here is we may never be able to cure the deficit against the ten percent. We just don't want it to be worse, and we certainly don't want somebody to come in, build a lot of units and not do anything about this. That's why I like what the proposed language just did, which is remove the hardship language, say, hey, you got to build wha- whatever percent it is. Now, now, if I'm a developer, I'd argue that if ten percent is a state standard, then it's one thing to for us to ask for ten percent, right? It's another thing entirely to ask for twenty, but I like this as a starting point.
All right. So the last three things. Um, like I said, I'm not sure we're going to resolve tonight. Um, going back to page three, under the chart that says how many affordable units per project size, we get into section four, which are the incentives that are meant to make these projects financially whole, even though they're providing these affordable units. Um, and I've told Lynn this, and I have no shame in telling you guys this, this is not my strength in planning at all. And so I really feel like um, I've put some numbers in here, but I I'm going to need some, someone who's more skilled than I am at translating numbers into projects and what they look like to kind of help figure out if these numbers are appropriate. Um, as you can see in the margins on section four, um, some of my questions are, given all of the things that are required on a site, specifically in the multifamily and apartment zone, we require fifty percent of the lot area to be landscaped area. This new incentive would allow fifty percent coverage. We also have to have parking on site. I don't know if you can fit all of these things in such a way that you can take advantage of this incentives that are being provided here. And so um, that's one of my questions. I want to know whether the massing we might get as part of the use of these incentives is something that we are comfortable with and that we think is consistent potentially with the surrounding development that we already have. And lastly, whether these incentives will result in buildings with affordable units being outwardly visible. Because as you can see here, I I allowed an increase in height to four stories or forty-five to fifty foot feet in in total building height. And are you going to drive around town in ten years and see every four-story building and go, oh, there's affordable units in that one? There's affordable units in that one. And maybe we don't care. Maybe that's fine, but like, is that going to be the net effect of this? So um, I've asked Lynn if maybe she could recruit one or more of the architects on our commission to help really look at this and give us some examples of what this might look like on the ground. But if any of you feel like you're strong in that area or have something to add, I'm totally open to your thoughts on how this, how how we craft this section.
I had two questions on this. One, uh, my understand, here's the background. Uh, my understanding is that if we are to require that a certain percentage of units be affordable, there has to be a give up in some way. And this is the give up. Now, for the give up, one, what types of give ups fit the bill? Do we have to give them one type of give up, or two, or three? And what degree of give up has to be given up? So those are my questions in order to pass muster.
Right. And I don't know that there's a, like a sort of regulatory answer to that question. Um, I I think Lynn sent it out a while ago when we were talking about whether to do the overlay or section seven point six, and it was a chart I made kind of summarizing all the towns and their different requirements. In some places, I was surprised. Actually, I don't know if I have the chart right here with me. Like, um, Greenwich, I know, does pretty much some version of all of these. And, you know, at some version of what I've put down here. But other places maybe just gave one thing, like, okay, you can increase the height, or you can increase the floor area ratio. So I don't think we have any obligation to do height, floor area ratio, density, and building coverage. I I mean, that that may be too much total, which, again, I'm not like a developer numbers person, I so I don't know which of these are the best ones to like make a project more feasible.
I'm looking at A, twenty units. Let's assume that's thirty parking spaces. That's a lot of parking spaces for grade parking. Uh, that's gonna chew up most of your acreage. And so unless you're going, I don't even know if you can fit that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Building and the height limit and everything else. I'm not sure that's good on, the math is gonna work on this.
So, and that's one of the things that I, we've heard from Greenwich. They're currently also revising um, and adding to what was their workforce housing. And what they had was a bunch of these incentives, and their developers kept coming back to them and saying it it doesn't work. Like, I can't take advantage of the density bonus you're giving me because this stuff just doesn't all fit on the site. Um, and that's how I know this is potentially a problem, but I don't know how to solve it myself.
So to just supplement what Krista said, in our conversations with Greenwich, um, what they thought about to solve the problem was both a combination of an increase in FAR and an increase of actual square footage in the development. And as well as a few other pieces. So it wasn't just one, but you could mix and match and create a better development by allowing it to be bigger in multiple ways.
Could you, could you also, you know, reduce the parking requirement? I know that.
Right. Yeah, no, I think that's definitely, you know, especially in the apartment and multifamily zone, potentially. If we're going to add all of these things, we may also need to consider a reduction in parking, a reduction in landscape area. Those are the two that come to mind first. Because those are just literally other things that are eating up your site that you're required to have.
Are there changes in, like, setback or, how do I say this, like, citing? So, you know, for example, say the acres on a knoll in the middle of town versus in, or it's up against another house, you know, the the setbacks and if the sighting, you know, the the median grade against the area, is there a possibility to to speak to that?
Yeah, I I think anything, you know, can be up for grabs. I also made a chart mostly for my use and Lynn's use, but I'm happy to share it with any of you that want to see it, that shows what the current regulate development standards in each of these districts are and how they would be changed by um, by what we've proposed here, if you're, you know, if you're doing inclusionary housing or affordable housing units.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, and that kind of allows you to see the side-by-side comparison. Again, I can't tell you how those numbers look in real life, but I can show you what, you know, the comparison of the numbers. Um, so anyway, if, and you know, please email Lynn if you have thoughts on this, or if you think you're particularly skilled in this. I would love your feedback. Um, and in addition, I'm going to see if we can get some of the architects recruited to help us.
Yeah, Krista, um, have you guys thought about running it by Glenn Chalder?
I mentioned that to Lynn. She said he might be a little busy right now.
Well, he probably is, but doesn't hurt to ask, and we've paid. Glenn does great work, so I don't want to make this sound wrong way, but Glenn's done a lot of business within New Canaan over the years.
Yeah, well, I'll I'll reach out to him. He's actually the consultant for the Woodbridge case.
Right. Um, and so related to those incentives, um, is also a conversation that I don't think we're going to complete tonight, but about design guidelines. And, you know, depending on how we feel these numbers are going to play out in the real world and what these things might look like, m- maybe we want to have specific design guidelines if you're building, you know, buildings with affordable units. My personal opinion is that we have a lot of layers of design guidelines in New Canaan, and frankly, they confuse me. We have section six point twelve, we have the village district design guidelines. Um, some of our zoning districts, like the multifamily and apartment zone, also have some design guidelines. So I was personally hesitant to add another layer here. Um, but, you know, again, depending on what these projects may potentially look like, that may be something we do, or maybe we amend one of those existing things that we have. So I think that's still out there. And then the last thing, we've got about five, maybe ten minutes left. Um, is we need to figure out who's gonna like oversee this whole thing. Um, because, you know, up until now, the housing authority has managed their own units. They so if you look at the last page, which is not part of the text changes, um, I've listed a a bunch of tasks that I saw elsewhere that seem like they're reasonable things that we would have to do every year if we, if we implement this. And there are things like annually reviewing and certifying the annual income of the households that are living in these affordable units and maintaining a list of eligible households who have applied for occupancy and making sure that these households are using them as their principal res- residence, and making sure that the sale price or the rental price are consistent with the eight thirty G requirement. You know, there's just a lot of back, you know, behind the curtain stuff that needs to go on to make sure that we didn't just put this on paper and never pay attention to if we actually got affordable units and uh, low-income people living in them. Um, and so.
Could I I go to those just for a sec? Because there are some standard answers to a couple of these questions.
Do it.
First, the administration, I I'm gonna make a leap here, that you're only going to build new affordable housing if it involves the use of tax credits. There are independent firms that are hired by all of the property owners to do annual certification compliance of issues like tenancy income. It is a highly technical, highly specialized and risk-prone subject. But the annual certs that have to be provided are done by third parties, and they're built into the modeling and pricing of developers. So the town should never be involved in income certs or qualification certs for eligibility. That that's, it it's just something, it's it's done. There are a limited number of firms that do it effectively, but they are out there, and that's the only way to do it.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yeah.
If I'm building four total units and I'm providing one that's affordable, um, as a developer, am I still going to be?
You're you're still gonna be subject. Still gonna be subject to compliance testing, and you're also going to have to do annual certs, and your tenants have to provide their tax returns and everything else. Um, so so tha- that part of it is different. Normally, a- and I see this all the time in my work. The the Lynn Avney Brooks of the world is responsible for keeping track of a town's inventory of affordable housing. It, you know, you just need to have as part of your audited set of management key performance indicators. You you got to keep track of where you are on that. And as part of the permitting process, you you need to have people provide certification to you of how they're doing relative to their unit. Remember that these will be deed restricted. New units will be deed restricted, so you have a control mechanism, which is important. But the keeping track of it is really very much a function of a planning and zoning office, and it always is, right? That as separate from the actual compliance with eligible tenancy. Um, I I mentioned it, I won't repeat in this meeting, but if anybody needs it outside, some of the technical issues you get into when somebody gets over income are quite remarkable. But generally, although there are teeth in the IRS rules, they're rarely enforced if somebody goes over income. Uh, but the town has an absolute obligation to know where it is relative to eight thirty G. The developer has a responsibility for providing certification. He needs to provide, he, she needs to provide that certification to maintain eligibility under the tax code.
And so who does the developer provide that to? The town or to the state, or?
Uh, actually, they frequently provide it to multiple people, including the investor in the tax credits particularly. That's why I know so much about it, right? Is I get certifications from the projects that I've invested in and for my bank, and they they tell me that here's the annual cert report. Cone Resnick did it, or it Cone doesn't do it, but they're a good example. You get in a firm that is knowledgeable in certs, certifications. And and the same thing applies to the lease-up process. Screwed-up lease-ups are an enormous problem because you then can't evict your tenant if you do a bad lease-up. So you do hire an independent firm to separately provide certs of eligibility and usually to maintain waiting lists. Um, it's one of the key problems with communities like ours, because everybody wants to get somebody they know into this affordable housing. And if it's allowed to be sort of controlled without that, then you you end up with all sorts of problems.
Okay, that was super helpful. Um, I will work on rethinking this a little, Art, and if it's okay with you, I'll I'll go through Lynn to see if what I've put together um, works, because it does make sense that it's kind of a developer responsibility for part of it, and then, but the town also has some responsibility for keeping track of where these units are, how many we have, and, you know, when the deed deed restrictions expire.
Yeah, David, by the way, McCarthy is quite good at this himself, too, if you want to even do an offline, because the the units that he's owns and controls now within his family real estate business are 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 in that realm. And, you know, we could do an offline call on that, too.
Okay. Um, all right, so that that is that section. All right, um, we, Lynn, we probably need to go in just a couple of minutes, but does anyone have any other thoughts or comments on sections I didn't cover?
Yeah, Krista, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, when would you all um, like to bring this to the commission? And typically, as many of you know, the way this works is it comes for, if we can do it in a regular meeting, or we can bring it directly to a a public hearing. Um, I'd be fine with either, whatever you all do, decide as a subcommittee. But remember that when we do bring it to a public hearing, you know, effectively, there will be another iteration up to this. There is going to be public comment. And historically, when we've had reg amendments, um, a lot of the public comment, you know, has been a fair amount of it has been pretty educated, and we've changed, you know, the the potential amendments. So you know, just food for thought.
So Lynn, I I can let you answer. I mean, we talked a little bit about this the other day. In an ideal world, we'd bring it to the next planning commission meeting. That really is contingent on me getting um, the issue of the. That really is contingent on me getting the issue of the incentives and this program administration piece kind of figured off, figured out between now and then, which hopefully is not a problem. But yeah, my, I was shooting for the May meeting. And I can't answer Lynn whether we were going to go to the commission or straight to public hearing. What do you, I don't know what you think.
Well, that would also be a function of what the commissioners would prefer. They want to just open it straight for public hearing or if anyone has additional thoughts that they wanted to add in and edit the, the regulation amendment prior to us bringing it to public hearing.
Lynn, could we circulate it by email to all of the commissioners before the meeting to get sort of that sense whether they want to talk about it in a meeting before we bring it to public hearing or, and then, you know, move from there?
We can. I mean, we had the, just to remind everyone, when we put, when we did the Airbnb, we did that not in a subcommittee. We, we did all those conversations. We're having the subcommittee now in a regular meeting format. And then we set a public hearing and once we had the public hearing, we took back the comments, re-edited and voted on the regulation amendment. Here we've done all the legwork, put it together. So do, do we want to open it up for public comments in a public hearing? And then edit it again and have a final version that if, if everyone likes, we vote on and approve?
I don't think it's fully baked yet. And I think doing a regular meeting so that the commission will have it as good as we think we can make it, then open it to the public. We make amendments as appropriate based on public feedback and then we move forward. It'd be my view. And I would try to do this with all deliberate speed.
All right. So that would be bringing it to the regular meeting in May, opening it for a public hearing in June and then.
Maybe closing it in June and then voting in either in June or in July.
Okay.
What happens if somebody comes with a permit request before then?
I think we tell them we've worked on this and they, you know, aren't basically obligated to follow it, but we would highly encourage them to do it. Lynn?
I hear in the permit because, you know, there's, there are properties in motion in the town. I just wonder whether we're going to get an application for something. And how such an application and these potential new rules would juxtapose themselves.
Well, we could reach out to town council. I think when we spoke to Greenwich, Greenwich told us they have a moratorium while they're revising the regulation to limit the amount of applications that would come in while they're, it's for a set amount of time. So we can talk to town council to see if we can put a moratorium on it for a set amount of time because we're working on a new set of regulations.
That's something to consider.
No, the one thing I would add is, John, I think it might be hard to open up on, on a reg amendment, to open a public hearing and close it on the same night.
Okay.
Oh, well, as you know, typically what happened, you know, look, we, we could get somebody who comes in and gives us some very good feedback. But I'm not convinced we'd want to, you know, on the fly. So that might be a challenge, that timing.
If it works out, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't. So be it. I agree. We have an option. We want to take up the option, we take it up. If it's appropriate. If it's not, we don't.
The traditional role here has been the developers use eight thirty G to get something else, right? Our new fear is that somebody comes in and builds something without the significant eight thirty G unit. We probably could deal, right, John? You, you would probably observe that we could actually, if somebody came in and said they wanted to take the satellory building and build a hundred units with no LMI, we could make a condition of it that they meet eight thirty G, right?
Good try.
I, I'm thinking of the situation where somebody comes in.
I don't know.
What the lawyers are, what the lawyers typically are going to say is something, a significant condition needs to be backed up in the regulations. Now, you know, let's think more about your thought, but that's typically, that's why we're quite frankly racing to get
I'm only thinking of the, what if one crops up?
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Well, guys, thank you so much for coming to this meeting before the next meeting. And I'm just going to wrap it up now so that we have at least a short bathroom break before we get started on the long haul tonight. So thank you for your time. If you have more thoughts, please send them to Lynn and she will forward them to me.
Great job, Krista.
Thanks, Art.